Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
10th Select Board February 15th special warrants excess weight permits correspondence old business reminder on the town meeting. Town Hall update personnel policy executive session active litigation for legal excuse me public comment and adjourn. Um, we need to add Parks Rec. Um, letter of resignation and liquor license for stewards. So. Does it matter where we put it?
I put the liquor license under weight permits because that's kind of part of.
Alright, so we're gonna put liquor license under five B liquor license.
Put Parks and Rec under old business.
Parks and Recs under old business. And then. Letter of resignation.
Next month.
Next month, yes. Before personnel policy.
Yep.
Okay, is that cool?
Sounds good.
Alright, with that, could I entertain a motion with the changes, please?
Move to accept or approve the agenda with the amendments.
Okay, Mike.
Aye.
Jamie, Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye, thank you. Okay, approval of minutes of February 10th special.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second, I don't care, is that the one that I was?
Okay, any discussion? Is that the one that I wanted to apologize for? Hang on.
I think that's the next.
That's the next one, the regular one, yeah, okay, so um, no further discussion on that, Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Abstain.
Angie, aye. Minutes of February 10th regular select board meeting, I just wanted to say. That I'm sorry for the confusion that we had on the town report. Um, this year, the town reports were mailed out on Friday 21122, they were on time. Um, it's very well done, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Um, you'll also have a chance to vote on Article 4 for sending out a postcard next year. So I just wanted to make sure, because after reading the minutes, it did sound very confusing. And I just want to make sure that people realize that yes, you should receive this in the mail this year. And next year, we hope to send the cards if the voters approve it on ballot for. What would you like to add?
They were mailed the 18th, not the 11th, is that correct, Megan?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yep, I just want to make sure we're.
I looked at the wrong date, I'm so sorry.
Because we all know how we're gonna be.
Yes.
So they were mailed the 18th, which fell under state statutes, they had to be mailed by the 19th.
Thank you very much for. I looked at the calendar, I looked at the wrong day, sorry.
I'm fine.
Okay, so with that, can I entertain a motion? Any further discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye abstain.
Angie, aye. Minutes of February 15th Select Board Special Meeting. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye, thank you.
Um. I think that, because I don't think we've done it, excuse me, um, that was the night that we hired Tara.
Yes, it was.
So I'd like to welcome Tara Parks Board as our administrative assistant. Um, hired on the 15th, I just want to announce that at a regular meeting and not just a special meeting.
Okay.
Oh, I need to correct, mine should have been an abstain, I was not in that meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you, Bob.
And um. I came in, was I in here yesterday, right? I came in yesterday and it was um unannounced. And it was really refreshing to see two people with their head down working, and that's what we had before Tim moved on. And um, that's what we had yesterday, so there was.
The first day you had her doing minutes. I walked in and she was doing minutes, she was doing an awesome job.
And I just, I just want to say that um, from what I saw yesterday and for the time that I was here, it was a limited time. Um. Are we gonna, are we gonna have a, are we gonna trip up and we're gonna have a, miss a beat probably? But we're not gonna miss too many beats with the staff that we have now, that's my take on seeing what was going on yesterday.
Well, we, we know we should have a learning curve.
Exactly.
Do people new positions.
I was really impressed with two heads down working and working diligently and doing what they were supposed to be doing.
Exactly.
Okay. Warrants. Accounts payable fifteen oh eight nine for thirty thousand eight hundred and sixty seven dollars and thirteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Accounts payable for two seventeen to two eighteen fifteen oh eight eight and the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie. Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Accounts payable fifteen oh nine six from two nineteen to two twenty five for sixty seven thousand eight hundred and thirty four dollars and sixty eight cents. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye, thank you. Alright, payroll from two eleven twenty two, Mike, you're in this one, this was from the last meeting, we didn't have um a forum, so you're in this one, okay? For twelve thousand two hundred and forty dollars and eighty one cents. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mike.
Abstain.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye, thank you. Payroll for two eighteen twenty two and for the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and ninety cents.
So moved.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Payroll ending two twenty five twenty two and the amount of nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty six cents. Can I entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, so I'm gonna open up for public questionings only on the accounts payable. Please raise your hand and state your name, Megan, is there anybody?
There's no one raising their hand.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to excess weight permits. There's quite a few of them, guys, so do you want to just do them one at a time, correct?
Just read them off and let's prove them or not.
Yeah, okay. Newport Sand and Gravel Company, do you need to know the amounts of, alright? Renard Brothers and Company. Barrett Trucking Company. Robert Green and Company. New England Quality Service and Company. Valley Crane Services. Phoenix Feeds and Nutrition. And that was it, right, Megan, that's it?
Move to approve the excess weight permits for the companies listed.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you. Alright. Liquor license renewal application for stewards. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Abstain.
Oh, I gotta abstain, I work there, sorry. Thank you. Correspondence, there wasn't any old business. Park, huh? You want old business?
No, correspondence is me.
Correspondence is you, yes. Letter of resignation. Sorry, I put you under town hall update.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Rebecca.
Yeah.
We have a letter of resignation for, from Rebecca as board liaison. Um, with transfer knowledge until April 1st. Can I entertain a motion to accept? That's a no, Rebecca.
I make a motion that we accept Rebecca's letter of resignation with regret because. Uh, she's been a very instrumental part of the team in bringing the town office.
Forward.
Team up to uh.
Yes.
What it is today, so.
I'll, I'll second and uh, and she has been tremendous, she has really helped this town move forward. It is with deep regret.
I can't say enough about her, she has helped us tremendously and it breaks my soul a little bit to see you go. Thank you.
I'll still be around.
I know. Alright, so we have a motion on the table, Mike, did you want to say anything?
I get a, I get a.
Start bawling?
No, I get a couple things. Um. I want to put it out there that um. The Select Board, we've taken some criticism. Since I've been on this board about, about the town hall and the date that the town hall got started and why we didn't start it earlier. Rebecca, can you answer this? We didn't have a permit in place, we didn't have a permit anywhere.
I'll just look up.
Yep. So we couldn't start the town hall project. Because we didn't have a permit.
It's one of the first things I did, absolutely.
And it took a while.
Took a long while.
Because we had to build relationships back with the state, fire and safety. Which took us, Rebecca and I worked very hard at that.
Yeah.
Her more than me.
There were some pretty damaged relationships.
There was some pretty damaged stuff going on.
And it took months.
It took a long time, so I want to get that out there.
Thank you.
Because probably without you, I don't know if we'd break ground yet, to be honest with you. Maybe, but still, it was, it was definitely something we worked extremely hard at. Um. And we, and we got a really good project down there. We've updated our office. In here, we've, we've um, we got some digitization going of our records, we got the elder grant. Probably wouldn't have happened without you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
It wouldn't have happened, not probably, it would not have happened. Um, the screen that we're looking at right now.
Yep.
There it is, it's all there.
Facts.
Um.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. There is a tremendous thing, we wouldn't have the. Our structure of our office. Would not be the same. As it is right now, without you.
Thank you.
The, the structure of our office, and I am extremely pleased, excuse me, with the structure of the office. I'm extremely pleased with the personnel who are in the office, there's no doubt that we're gonna miss Tim. There's also no doubt that Megan can fill those shoes and she's going to and she's going to learn and she's going to um excel in that position. And I don't have a doubt in my mind that Tara's going to.
Tara's great.
Work alongside you and she's going to excel as well. Um, I, I don't have a doubt in my mind, I told you that yesterday when I was in here and whatever. We wouldn't have that structure, it wouldn't be here. Um. Some of the, some of the personnel. Policy updates, some of the, there's just so many things.
The fixer.
That wouldn't.
You are the fixer.
No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have taken place, I mean honestly, so when, when we say we're gonna miss you, yes, we are going to miss you.
Thank you.
Extremely. But I also feel that. With the right. Guidance from you in the next month and a half or whatever it is, um, month. That Megan and Tara. Will. They're not, let's face it, they're not gonna take on the same role and be able to do the same things right off the bat. But they're gonna learn and they're gonna, and they're gonna, within a certain learning curve timeframe, they're gonna be able to pick up that ball and keep it rolling. The mom might slow down a little bit, I mean, but it's, but it's gonna keep rolling and we're gonna keep moving forward.
Yep.
I also hope, I hope that. You. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm good, huh?
Okay.
I hope that you explain when you get a chance. To of some of the things that led up to this, because we've had this in-depth conversation. I don't think people need to know why.
Well, I mean.
Not on a personal basis, but from the in-house.
Okay.
Basis in here.
Well, as you, I mean, as you know, in typical, you know, Rebecca Dragon style, I did not just write you a short letter, I wrote you an incredibly long one. With what I believe should be your path forward, um, things that I personally struggled with, that I gave you suggestions of how those things could possibly be addressed and remedied in the future. Um, you know, then, you know, I'm in grad school, um, I'm, those are my just ma- major reasons and it's going on the back burner a lot, this job. Because it's very hard for me to say no to things in panel, um, does take a lot of my time, I need to focus on my education right now and what's next for me in life. And um, but you know, I will say this, that there's, there is a major struggle that I have here and I know that it is also. How, why current and past people who have worked here, it is public service, you're dealing with the public, it's very, very difficult. However, we're also a small town, we're meant to be neighbors and I will say this, that um, I encourage not only citizenry, but also fellow employees. And also board members, commission members, public officials, everyone, my encouragement as I go is to. If you're really mad at certain people, like if you're mad at people on the board, before you start jumping and making conjecture and throwing blame around. Think about the collateral damage, think about the collateral damage of what happens, I see critiques of the board all the time. Done through critiquing the minutia of the work that town office staff does, there is really no other job, especially hourly paid job. That is under so much public scrutiny like that, I've seen my name on social media more times than I ever want to see, I've seen it in the banner more times than I ever want to see it. I get very discouraged, many people know this about me, I get very discouraged when I see office staff being publicly slammed instead of being called and saying, hey. Can you tell me why something ended up like this or why you made a certain decision or um, there's a lot, I just really would love to see panel move away from that. And my encouragement to you as the board as well is also to always check your motivations about, don't make decisions because you're mad at someone or don't frustrated by them. It, this is for everyone, this is for citizenry, this is for everyone, panel needs to drop the rock, needs to drop the rock and needs to. Even in disagreement, stop finding gotcha moments and stop, you will never be able to retain good help here. If people that work here are constantly being.
Ridiculed.
Ridiculed. Spoken about instead of to on social media in public discourse, that's my encouragement, now, that does not mean discouraging pub, you know, any public, people can say whatever they want on social media everywhere else. So obviously, this is me saying this is not like, find a way to stop it, this is just my encouragement, I hope I've earned enough respect in the town of panel with the people here by now. That maybe my words will have an effect and I really hope that in the future, people will think before they just post and say things. Have a conversation, show up, if you don't like something Megan has done, talk to Megan, she's a human being, she is not a whipping post to get at. You know, Bob Jarvis, Mike Gardner, Angie, so that's, that is one of my biggest things that I really impressed, I did write a very long letter with a lot of other things in it. I'm, it's a public record, anyone's welcome to read it, most of it is just positive ideas for going forward for you guys, so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. If anyone in town has questions for me, I'm happy to speak to them, um, I'll be here at the election, I'll be here next week, so. Yeah, and I'm not going away forever, I mean, I'm here, I'm in panel, I have a house in panel, we're gonna, you know, I'll probably show up on that Zoom and make some comments at some point. So, anything else for me or can I roll over?
You can roll over, thank you ma'am. So with that, we have her resignation.
We gotta vote on it.
We have to vote on it, yes, so Mike.
With deep regret, aye.
Jamie.
Same, aye.
Bob.
Uh, with deep regret, aye.
Angie, with deep regret, aye.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I'm still finishing out some projects, so.
I know.
Okay.
Okay, so.
We got it for another month anyway.
Yes.
You got her for another month.
Alright, old business Parks and Rec, Megan, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, so um, Parks and Rec wants to go forward with the um, grant, it's the Vermont Recreation Trail Grant.
Yep.
And um, so they, did you?
I did read it, yeah.
There's a deadline.
There's a deadline. And they're asking for twenty five thousand.
Yes, yep, so they want to submit a letter of interest, um, and Jennifer just wanted me to reiterate that um, the money would be to improve the existing trail. So it's not a new project, it's to maintain the one that.
That they already started.
That's right, yep.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion or is she just looking for our um?
Um, I believe yes, you do need approval.
I'll move to approve Parks and Rec to um, pursue that twenty five thousand dollar grant for the trails.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Can I give you a quick suggestion regarding Parks and Rec and this exact question about applying for grants? Um, have Chuck make the chair of Parks and Rec a town email, because then she would be able to register on these um, grant websites herself. Um, and there, you'd also, it would be really great to get official, you know, they, they only, they only have personal emails, so it'd be great to have at least one of them to have a town email to put all their communications into the record.
That's a good idea.
Do you work on that, Megan?
Yep, I'm working with Chuck tomorrow, ask him if he can do it right away.
Oh, great, thank you very much. Okay. So we had a motion, we had a second, did we all say aye? Yes.
I don't think we were.
Okay, Mike.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Angie, aye, I'm a little rattled over Rebecca, it's okay.
You'll get over it.
I know, I will, alright. Town Hall update, oh no, wait a minute, reminder, the town meeting is on February 24th, 2022 at seven thirty PM at the panel.
No, twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, yep.
That's a misprint, that's a typo.
You're killing me, Smalls. Alright, let's try this again, town meeting on February 28th, 2022 at seven thirty PM at the panel elementary school. And we have to follow COVID. Um, restrictions, so they are recommending that you wear a mask.
It's a recommendation.
Yep, it's a recommendation.
Not mandatory.
Nope, recommendation.
So. To expand on that, on March 1st, on voting day, I believe the plan is for you and Tara to be at the firehouse. Well, same as they were last year.
We, we've been talking, I don't let.
I mean, we could, but I'm not quite sure exactly, you know, what would be informational, especially since we're.
Well, last year we did it for the town hall because.
Right.
Oh, that's true.
You know, what, what, one idea we had was that, I, and I could help them with this, is that we could go back and forth, always have someone, you know, checking in, but um, start doing some totes.
Yes, we have, we have fourteen in the other room, they just arrived today, so we can start. Packing up any day.
Alright.
Okay. That's totally fine.
Alright.
It's probably a more productive day. Okay, perfect, sorry.
I'll be there part of time, I'll try and be there for some of the days, if you can time to me and, you know, and you will too, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Town Hall update, Mike.
Yep. So I was looking for this email, ma'am. Um, Megan and I got this email today from Eric. Um. Basement walls are compounded, sanded, primed and painted, suspended ceiling in the basement is completed, electrician roughing is complete. Electrician installed suspended ceiling fixtures, switches, etc. Uh, plumber is gonna install the heat vents and suspended ceiling on Friday of this week, which would be tomorrow. Flarm company to come March 1st to install the final fixtures and get the system online. Um, we believe the IT work is complete. From Chuck, handicap parking signs have been installed. Um, we spoke with Lucy McNulty, um, who did the signs here, we're gonna reuse the existing signs on this building. They're gonna fit the decor of the new building, um, we are gonna put up new nine one one numbers on, on the new building, because it's a different number anyway. The state inspectors will be down here March 3rd for preliminary inspection, then the final CO inspection will be March 8th, tentatively. Excuse me, we're still waiting for the drinking fountain and the plumbing fixtures for the basement bathroom. Which brings us to Megan and I have been discussing. Moving date.
Gotta be after March 1st, right? Before we.
Well, we don't have, with March 8th, we don't have a CO until the 8th at the earliest, we won't have, we won't have the CO until the March 8th, March 8th at the earliest. Um, that's when Matt will be down from the state to give us the, you know, the CO, he's coming the 3rd to give us a preliminary um, punch list. And then um, March 8th should be the final punch list and the CO should be given to us at that point. Which brings us to the moving date and you can announce that because you've been working pretty hard on that, pretty diligently, to be honest with you, so take it away.
Yes, so we have Connor's Brothers ready to move us and it'll be on March 15th.
Awesome.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood.
Yep, so we have, we have a moving date of March 15th. Um. Connor's Brothers started, I saw their truck here today.
Mm-hmm, they dropped off two.
Okay, so they dropped off some stuff that they can start packing, um, so our tentative moving date is March 15th at this point. Barring any.
And you, you already have wifi over, or not wifi, but all that stuff over there.
Internet is.
Internet and all that's working.
I brought my laptop over there the other day to work. It was great. It'll be better with furniture in it, but.
You just went over there and sat by yourself?
Yeah.
Nice.
You know when you get a lot of people in and out of here, it's.
Yeah, it's easier to make phone calls.
Yep.
In, in an actual office.
Nice. Okay, good. Alright, moving on to personnel policy. Alright.
I would think, well, we're on the town hall, I would think that the, the next board. Can make the decision on. How we want to do that, if we're just gonna move in or whatever we're gonna do.
Right. And with ideas of what to do with this building.
Well, yeah, that's. Gotta get out of it first.
Exactly.
We're not too far away. We're pretty close.
Okay. So can you like sign them, please?
No. I don't have a pen, I don't get a pencil.
You never have a pen.
I don't write with pens, hello.
Alright, personnel policy. Did everybody read it and see all the notes? From VLCT, their comments? Do you want to go over one by one or did everybody read it?
I'm all set with the.
Bob, did you read it, are you all set?
I did read it, I'm all set.
Mike?
I can't read, yes, I'm fine. I can't read, yes, I'm fine.
Megan, did you have any other suggestions than what V L C did?
I did not, um, there is one section that is a bit confused about, um, that I went over with Joel, actually. It was just the language of it, I wasn't really sure if you wanted to change that or just keep.
Where are you?
Give her a minute.
Should've had an earmark here. This is a different copy. It had to do with, um, town vehicles when there's an emergency.
Vacation.
Was changed by any chance.
Oh, there it is. It's under community service, that's page twenty. And so the third item says the town vehicle cannot be left out of service when the vehicle is critical to ongoing town work. Did have, uh, V L C T had a comment on that also.
Where are you, honey? Under agreement, you said?
Page twenty? It's under.
So what was he suggesting?
I mean, it made sense to him as soon as he read it.
Yeah.
Only be, yeah, um. What they were saying is left out of, wh- what exactly does that mean, left out of service?
Well, technically, it means is if, if, say you had a town vehicle and you drove it home. And then there was an emergency and we needed that vehicle, you need to be able, it needs to be access, accessible.
Right.
During the emergency.
No. No, I don't believe that's a Jamie. This, this is if, this is if a person.
If the fire station or something.
If an employee is a fire department member or something like that and they're community service. This makes total sense to me.
Yeah.
So, so if there's an employee who was a member of the fire department or the rescue squad or, or, uh, the Red Cross, whatever. If they're doing a community service. And they take it, if they take a vehicle to. And respond to an emergency situation. Then. If that vehicle, if it's a snowstorm and it's a plow truck. That's what this is saying, along those lines. The vehicle cannot be left out of service when the vehicle is critical to ongoing town work. That's, that's what that's saying. And I, I don't think that's an issue.
I, I think it's a matter of, instead of using the left out of service. Phrasing it differently.
Well, it's, it's totally understandable, I, I, I mean, I understand what they're saying and.
Would it make sense to just put the example in there as an example? So, uh, if the employee has access to a town vehicle, the town vehicle cannot be left out of service. When the vehicle is critical to ongoing town work, for example.
Right.
You cannot, and just, and it's almost in the comments, for example, the town plowed truck at home. Inaccessible to other employees while performing community service.
Right, right.
I agree with that, that's a good suggestion.
Right, if they're, you know, if they're on, if they're on a, emergency services call.
Or I can't drive the state truck to the firehouse and leave it there. Found with a fire truck.
Right.
Great, okay. Okay, got it.
Oh yeah, I think that's the best thing to put in there as an example.
That's right. Okay, with that change, is everybody satisfied? Can I entertain a motion to accept the personnel policy? With the change? Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right, executive session for activated, uh, active, active legalization, oh my god.
Already legalized.
I'll, I'll move to go into executive session for active lit- litigation and legal. With premature knowledge, we'll put the town at a disadvantage.
Are we taking action on it?
I don't.
Possibly.
Okay.
With possible action.
Can I entertain a motion? You just, just have a second?
Second.
Um, Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Question, please?
I'm moved to come out of executive session.
Second.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Uh, action from the executive session. I move to create a procedure regarding any litigation involving the town of panel. Will be kept by the legal custodian or liaison assigned to the case, which at this time is Rebecca Dragon. And can only be accessed by a vote from a quorum of the select board of the town of panel.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you. Now I'd like to open up for public comment. Megan, you have, um, something to say?
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that the, um, town report is still available on the front page of the website, right below the ballot articles. And there's also a copy that is in large font, so that is much easier to read the, um, uh, budget items. At the end of the report.
Thank you, Megan.
Put that on there.
No problem.
Okay, so we can open up to public comment. Please remember to raise your hand, state your full name. You have three minutes. Thank you.
All right, Jim? Jim?
Jim?
Working out on mute himself.
You're still on mute.
Yep. I asked him, Jamie, oh, maybe he didn't raise, want to raise his hand. Mindy Jo?
Good evening, Mindy Jo over here. I wanna say a couple of things. One, Rebecca, I'm sorry to see you go. You are one of the very smartest. Women. I've. I've met or seen, whatever. The other thing is I miss the sewer.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, sweetie. I just wish you'd stay, actually. We're losing good people for the wrong reasons as far as I'm concerned.
I'll be, I'll be around, Mindy, I'm still in panel.
However. Um. I know there's only three sore things that can be done a year and I understand it cuz of whatever. But I keep asking about the ones that's not allowed to be used. And nobody's answering me on that. I believe I've emailed about it, I've asked about it. One has been denied use of because of a low line wire and everybody knows it, but nobody will. I don't understand why we gotta pay for something that we're not allowed to use it. Like, we're not choosing to use it, we're not allowed to use it. And when I brought that up to a certain person, I said that's not only, I think, illegal and unconstitutional. I got told that was not up for debate or discussion, that it was in your rules. Well, how can you force somebody to pay for something, water and or sewer, if they're not allowed to use it? That's something for you guys to ponder, not to answer, but I would really like an answer at some point, be email, face-to-face. Like we're meeting something. Why do I gotta pay for something or we, the park, have to pay for something that's not allowed to use? Denying, denying three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars a year to pay four ninety-one a year plus four ninety-one a year. Or whatever it is for each. One has nothing to do with the other, I'm just saying, as a bundle thing. It's not allowed to be used, yet we have to pay for it. Makes no sense to me. On that note, good luck, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, Miss Ange.
Thank you. Excuse me. Anybody else, please raise your hand?
Jim?
Hi there, Jim Kosas, um, North Mason Hill Road. I'm sorry about before my mute blue button, um, didn't show up, so I couldn't. On you. First of all, Rebecca, good luck to you. Um, thank you for all that you've kind of, um, um, given to me. To kind of understand what's been going on. Um, second, um, I, first of all, I'm looking forward to going into the new town office. I, I, I really give you guys a lot of credit, um, to get it accomplished and get it done. Um, as you know, I always like to keep the people, um, informed of what's, um, some of the numbers when the annual report comes out, so. I just am curious that hopefully somewhere down the road, um, before a lot of people do, um, make up their, um, ballots. Uh, you can tell me, um, where the two hundred thousand dollar shortfall is gonna be coming from. I know there was a discussion of putting five hundred thousand, or fifty thousand dollars back, undesigned it into the taxes. But that would leave like another hundred and fifty thousand that's, um, not available. And you haven't explained where we're gonna be able to make that up now that the budget has all been done. And so I, I, I'm hoping that there wasn't extra monies, like a hundred and two thousand dollars put into the budget revenue. That was gonna be used to, um, offset the, um, the town hall. Cuz I, from, according to what I can read, that's being used now to offset the taxes. Um, if that is not the case, I guess I'm wondering why the hundred and two thousand dollars is in the budget as an offsetting tax. Um, what is it covering in the general expenses? Um, because it wasn't kind of sta- stated in the article that, um, there would be not only undesigned funds. But also designated funds that are being used to decrease the, um, um, tax rate calculation, so. Um, hopefully that will come out, um, just so that people understand what they are really voting for in this budget. And, um, I thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Anybody else, please raise your hand?
There's no one else raising their hand.
I move to adjourn.
Can I have a second? Okay. Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night and please be safe tomorrow.